Public comment, they get built.
I'm sure that's what you're saying. You think they'll have a headshot.
Yep.
Okay, it's gonna cost, let's call this meeting. Carter, go call, sorry. All right, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Moore. There, thank you. Okay, Angela Desiree, please stand.
Let the agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While we ask your president our meeting as we do the business of the county, we ask her to give us the wisdom and the strength and the courage to do our job in the manner we were elected to do. We thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed and ask all this to change.
Thank you. I consent to gentle items and mention the regular media last week. The monthly reports for both collector and auditor. I have motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Uh, there are no table agenda items. Okay, uh, we would like to talk about awarding road contracts. Now there are three roads, Hildebrandt, Oak Ridge, and John.
Worthen Road. Worthen. Worthen.
Where they're gonna get the money for that.
John Gross, Highway Administrator. We would like to award three roads today, Hildebrandt, Oak Ridge Road, and Worthen based off of the March bids. Uh, the Hildebrandt Road is three point three miles, Oak Ridge is point four mile, and.
Point four miles.
Point four.
Okay.
And Worthen is one point three. So it's our recommendation that we award, uh, sled belt materials, Worthen Road and Oak Ridge, and Vern Baumann to, uh, for Hildebrandt Road.
Okay.
Based on the recommendation of the, uh, Highway Administrator, I move that we award these bids for high, uh, asphalt road.
Second? Any other comment? This is, uh, budgeted and given.
It'll be back in March.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment on that.
Yes.
You guys seem to think that sixty-seven is a highway, sixty-seven is.
I'm sorry?
You guys seem, seem to think that sixty-seven is a highway, sixty-seven is a freeway. People do seventy, eighty miles an hour to there all the time. They get, they go on eighty miles an hour down, down sixty-seven, then they turn, then they turn off on Hildebrandt Road. What do you think they're gonna do? They're gonna go seventy miles an hour down Hildebrandt Road. Speed limit is thirty-five to there, they don't care, they just lie. And they're doing that in all the tur- a, a lot of these places. You should've put in frontage roads and then on and off ramps. I know it costs more money, but it'll keep people from getting killed. There was just another accident over there on sixty-seven and H Highway where people got wiped out. There's always accidents out there. And, and all, for fifteen years that I've been living out there, uh, nobody's done anything. And, uh, they should've put, instead of these J turns, which are useless, I almost got nailed by some woman that was trying to make a U turn. No, she made a left turn right into me from one of those stupid J turns. She didn't know what the heck it was and she didn't know how to use it. Those J turns are dangerous, they should've, in most cities and most states, they, when they have a freeway, they have an on and off ramps. They don't have these J turns and side streets coming on and off the freeway. That's been a problem for years. And I guess you guys aren't gonna do anything about it, but you should at least hear about it.
Please do a comment, and that is basically a MODOT situation. Who wants in charge of the highway?
Well, part of that, but part of it is yours too.
Okay, well, okay, I'm not sure how that works, but okay.
Well, you, you control Hildebrandt Road, right?
We control Hildebrandt, but we don't control the right of way of sixty-seven. That's MODOT.
Have you ever ma- gone to MODOT and said, hey, can we?
Yes, we have talked to them about it.
Been in conversation with them now, but.
About what, putting in a, a freeway or?
No, J turns and, and changing the traffic patterns. We had a comment two weeks ago about the new asphalt plant going in out there. I'm sorry, not asphalt plant, concrete plant. So these things are. Fluid? That we're working on, are working with Brian O'Keeffe, a MODOT engineer on a regular basis. It's not something we ignore or forget about, we understand that.
Well, that's the way we see it. Forget about us.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I have a motion, second. Uh, approval of these three road contracts now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, and that's a, is service contract for, uh, the assessment office. Get Vanguard appraisals, Dan? You wanna talk about this?
Yes, this is through the Vanguard, which is a sole source provider that, uh, we want to do for our appraisal program on commercial, residential, and for personal property. The one service contract is an agreement for what they call comparable search, which allows us to, uh, provide not only the assessor, but property owners and the BOE comparable properties on, on subject that are in question on an appeal, similar to a comp that the, the realtors use to come up with equal values. Another one is for, uh, personal property account management. Uh, it allows the personal property to, uh, excuse me, assess the personal property to the real estate parcel. A lot of this is dealing with mobile homes because we've had an issue over the years. Some mobile homes are personal property, some are real estate, depends on how they're built and how they're designed, the foundations. Of course, the last one is to purchase some additional service hours at a discounted rate. We did this a while back. Those hours were expended, uh, by hiring their commercial appraiser, appraiser to come down and work with, uh, my commercial, uh, collector to make sure that we have some of our values more in line. And we need to restate some of those hours for future use in education, training on these programs. And they are giving us a pretty good discount on those. That's all I have. And everything is in the budget for this.
So your recommendation is to what?
Our recommendation is just to allow us to go with these service contracts on these two items and to purchase the extra time that you have in our budget for that.
And they prefer payment on some of that, some of it's in your budget?
I apologize, yeah, that, that shows on there that we have the bud- we have it in the budget, but they've been kind enough to say that, hey, we can use it and they'll build us in twenty-twenty.
Okay. Because it wasn't budgeted this year.
Well, it was not specifically budgeted. We had the money, but when I made that offer, I couldn't.
Okay. Your recommendation is to approve, did I have a motion? I would really be approved the contract license agreement.
Second is motion.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question. Why have you tripled my property taxes and not given me any, any reason why? And, and there was no impact statement, no disclosure, nothing. Tripling my property taxes? I would like to know why, uh.
Okay, let's, let's hold this off to public comment because it's not on this particular.
Well, he's talking about mobile homes, he's talking about.
Okay, but let's, let me, ask me to defer, then we'll have a public comment a little bit section, a section a little bit later. Please bring that up then.
Well, I just think that hundred and six, hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars for a mobile home is, is a little bit outrageous.
Okay, but let's hold that until public comment and then you'll have all the time you need.
In fact, it's highway, highway robbery is what it is.
Let's hold off until public comment, you'll get all of it. Now, on this topic, this item, I have a motion, second. Are there any other questions?
Is this a re- renewalment of existing contract or is this?
Actually, the purchase is, this is all existing contract which we have. We're renewing some of, and some of it are some new forms of use, especially with the, uh, module does comparables on, on homes and the other one with the mobile home to try to bring that more in line where we can, uh, value them properly instead.
Get more money out of them.
Over the board. The service contract for additional time is something that is not necessarily new, we did in the past, but we use those, those hours up and we, we're gonna need more, I mean, at the value of those, it's worth it to do it now.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a motion, second, to approve this, uh, expenditure. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, uh, now, the next topic will be, uh, Lauren, our HR lady, is going to talk about additional policies. And we do have to adhere to policies and procedures on a regular basis and she's been working on it, so go ahead, please.
Yeah, well, I just wanna start out, uh, by saying that everything I'm gonna talk about today is just a draft. Um, I'm gonna, there's copies up there that go into detail about all the policies. These are simply just summaries. Um, I really want feedback and opinions from everyone, office, and office holders, employees, um, public too even, so that we can make sure that these policies are effective for everyone. One of the policies that needs to be added just regarding employment verification requests simply just says that all requests must be answered by the office holder, no one else in the department. Uh, and all requests must also contain the employee or former employee's signature authorizing the release of information. And you should notify the employee if they are a current employee that someone's requesting information. Uh, another policy that needs to be added is about paying out, uh, sick time upon separation. We do have some things in there, um, that we'll leave that just talks about how we pay out based on, um, the employee's length of service. But we should also add a section that gives employees the option to donate their sick time to the sick pool when they leave, no matter the reason. Not sure many people do that, but just in case. Okay, um, this is about alcohol and controlled substance use, abuse, and testing policy. It would allow us to have the option to drug test under five different circumstances, some more common than others. Reasonable suspicion testing, post-accident testing, return to work testing, follow-up testing, and random testing. Uh, and, uh, and those cop- copies up there goes into detail about when you would use those certain, um, types of tests. That's just summary. And it also states the consequences regarding drug tests. A few things will get employees automatically terminated. That's refusing to take any tests, possessing, buying, selling, manufacturing, or dispensing an illegal drug. Those should all get you automatically terminated. But I did kind of leave it open, uh, for the office holders, when someone tests positive, how they wanna handle that. Um, and the policy states, depending on circumstances, the employee's work history and record, and any state laws, the county may offer an employee who violates this policy or tests positive the opportunity to return to work on a last chance basis pursuant to mutually agreeable terms, which can include follow-up testing, uh, which is one of the reasons that I included that, um, and return to work testing in this policy because if they do choose to bring an employee back, obviously we need to follow up and make sure that they're staying off, uh, whatever they tested positive for.
Lauren, a lot of things, your contract with union contract stipulates a lot of these things even tighter than this, but if this does not conflict with any of their sense.
Right. They follow that first.
Nothing that I've, from nothing that I've worked today, that's not.
That's right. And we have a contract, all contract will stay in place, this is for the people that aren't, kind of that.
Yeah. Okay, um, some alcohol and controlled substance prohibitions. Uh, there are some things that should be prohibited, um, about the operation of a vehicle and engaging in work-related functions under five different circumstances while consuming alcohol, while having a blood concentration level of point zero two or higher within four hours of consuming alcohol, after refusing to submit to an alcohol test, which like I said, should get you terminated anyways, um, and from consuming alcohol within eight hours after an accident has occurred. Uh, and the reason I, it says eight is because in the detailed policies, um, they have eight hours maximum to take a drug test after an accident. Obviously we wanna much sooner than that, but if we gotta protect on both sides. There's also a new policy about the use of company vehicles. The only policy that we have right now in the handbook regarding driving as a condition of your employment is that the employee is required to have a certain type of driver's license for whatever kind of vehicle they are operating. And we'll keep that, but I do think it's important to add a few other things, a lot of it's kind of common sense that needs to be in writing to protect ourselves. Drivers need to report all infractions, violations, accidents to their manager and county clerk's office within twenty-four hours and I'll get, I'll, I'll do that. All restrictions, suspensions, um, against a driver's license must also be reported to our manager, report unsafe and operable and damaged vehicles to our supervisor, employees responsible for daily housekeeping of the vehicle, and no one but county employees should be operating or riding in county vehicles, uh, with the exception of law enforcement, transportation, detainees.
Because we're not sure of that, that person, if your, your buddy's just riding along with you, it's like you're doing.
Right, and, um, it says that in one of the policies that we will get to. Um, so a vehicle accident procedure policy is necessary. Uh, this policy will outline what someone, an employee should do in case of an accident in a county vehicle. The police should be called no matter the severity. Um, the employee should request a police report to be sent, uh, to the county clerk's office. And it's also the employee's responsibility to fill out that vehicle accident report that will be located in their glove box. Um, it's that form up there. I also wanna upload it to ESS so that the employee can have access to it from a computer and printout, get it filled out, uh, should it not be in their glove box. But the purpose of reporting, or the reason it's so important to report these things, um, because we have, we deal, do insurance in the county clerk's office and the insurance is calling about, um, whatever reason, and half the time Rhonda, the lady that does insurance has no idea what they're talking about. Uh, they ask very specific questions, which that, um, report asks those things that can get answered and would just really benefit some of your insurance.
You've made extra copies of the vehicle count report, the employee's report, you're gonna talk about that second, employee injury form, and employment verification requests. So if somebody wants those, those are for the public, it's not heavy, but to everything also you'll talk about here, you will upload it on the website, including the details of the current controls.
Right. So, um, the, this policy also states that the employee in the accident will be required to take a drug and alcohol test following the accident under four circumstances. When a fatality has occurred, when a traffic citation is issued after an accident, where injury to a person requires transport to a medical treatment facility, where disabling damage to one or more vehicles requires towing from the accident site. I know the road, if Road Ridge Department already does this and Sheriff's Department, but we do have a couple others that we need to make sure follow the same guidelines. Um, they use ODAC, so I called them and got some quotes, it's about forty dollars for a twelve-panel drug test. Um, the dr- drug test comes back positive and has to go through the MRO process, which allows employees to show their prescription, if that's a reasonable, if they're positive, whatever. Um, that's an extra thirty dollars. Breath alcohol test is thirty, and there's a fifty-six cents, uh, fee per mile driven if ODAC has to travel to administer a drug test. So, don't have that many accidents, fairly cheap, um, so just make sure we're staying compliant. Um, it's also important, uh, in this policy to state that if an employee is driving their own car for work purposes and gets in an accident, it is up to them to solve that with their own insurance company, not the county's. Uh, the county will not compensate for deductibles or damage not covered by the employee's personal insurance policy. Um, that's not just something that needs to be added in the handbook, I mean, that our insurance company literally will not pay for it, so, uh, unless we wanna pay out of the department budget, then it's not a good idea to have other people in the car, or drive their car for work. Um, we also have some people that take home their county vehicles, so, uh, we should also add that accidents in county vehicker, vehicles that occur not on company time must be covered by the driver's own insurance company, um, that, again, our insurance company will not compensate for those deductibles or damage.
I, I have a question, is ODAC, ODAC's open twenty-four hours?
They're accessible. They're not open twenty-four hours, but we have a number, say we have an accident, three in the morning, we can call them and they'll show up to the person.
So who else would need to know that number?
I have it.
Sheriff's Department, I guess you have it, or whatever, so, they, those are people who'll be out in midnight.
Okay, uh, this policy is regarding work-related accidents, injuries, and near misses, um, not to do with vehicles. Uh, this policy just, um, discusses accidents that result in bodily injuries, equipment damage, fires, work disruption, et cetera. An accident may result in no actual damage and those are called near misses, regardless whether it's an actual accident or a near miss, um, it's important that we report and investigate those. It can protect both the employee and the county in certain situations when it comes to insurance and money.
If some situation is dangerous, we need to know about it.
And that too, yeah.
Even though if you, you didn't, you had a near miss.
Right.
You want it reported so that somebody can investigate and if the carpet's loose someplace or if there's, if there's something that may cause you to trip down the, the stairway or something, even though you don't do it, we need to, you know, you had, came close, we need to investigate it to try to limit our work comp claims because of accidents that we should've been able to prevent.
Right, it just raises awareness to, um, safety basically. So with reporting, um, and investigating those injuries and near misses, um, there's a basic form up there, the injury report form. You, you and your supervisor fill out together, um, supervisor is responsible for conducting the investigation and, and that doesn't mean an, an in-depth review of whatever happened, just like you said, whether it's the carpet needs to be super glued down or something, or, um, get cable out of the way so no one trips over it. Um, and that would also need to be uploaded to ESS just so people can have twenty-four seven access. Okay, the last one, um, that we have revised recently is the vacation policy. There are a couple things that we need to change about our vacation policy to stay competitive with other employer, employers. And the first one is the way that we will see our vacation. Um, right now we get it in a lump sum on our anniversary date. I think it is best if we change that to, um, per, you accrue it per paid period. So you would receive a certain amount each paid period based on the amount of hours you work in the week and your length of service, just like it is now. Um, the total amount you get each year does not change, you just honestly get it earlier because you would get it as you earn it. Um, so how does it look for current employees? Is that on your anniversary, say we implement this July first, on your anniversary date, whatever, July second, you'll get the amount of weeks that you're expecting and then the paid periods after that you'll begin accruing. So it will take about a year, obviously a year, to get everyone to the accruing part. But in the end, it's just better because everyone gets it earlier.
And the, the, the big thing we found talking to office holders is when they're hiring people in this environment, tell them they cannot take any vacation days for a full year. This lets you after six months take one of the weeks, or two of the days, or whatever. So you can, you can wait to the end of the year and get the full two weeks, or you can start accessing it as after six months, that was the policy.
Through probation periods.
After the probation, ninety, ninety days. And after ninety days, you would have like two and a half days of vacation that you could take off so that you could do it quicker. When you're occurring somebody and saying, you're switching and I had three weeks vacation for my present employer, but come with us, you gotta work a full year before you can take any days off, this, I think would be.
So it's more advantageous for the employer.
It is, and, and, so it would mean that first year employees, they would get time, um, in their first year. Right now they don't, obviously for that reason. Um, they can't, they would accrue it right away, start it right away, but won't be able to take it further through probation period. So with that being said, um, for employees that have been hired in the last year, um, from the time of this, they wouldn't have that vacation, so it's only right that we kinda prorate them for that vacation time that they've earned. Uh, there are twenty-eight employees that would be affected by that, um, so they would get all of that vacation right away.
And it's wash, accounting-wise, that's why we can do it in between. You're giving them the same amount of time, you're just letting them access it quicker.
Yeah, so the same, the amount of hours that employees, uh, will be able to accumulate and carry over each year will stay the same, so that's not affected either.
Now, you're presenting these now, in the hope that we'll have enough public comment and, uh, office, elected officer, whole, uh, holder's comment and people getting in, beating in, saying, well, I, what about this? What about that? Change this, I, I like that, don't like this. And then we would act on it, I think, on the new term, which is.
July first, yeah.
With, with the input from the public and the community.
Right. I really want July first to be set in stone because I had to do some, um, manual calculations for this po- vacation and.
So we have two weeks before we'll act on any of this. And hopefully people will comment enough time that you can make the changes before it's presented for actual, uh, approval, uh, on July one. And that will, yeah, and that will be the new term and it's a Monday meeting by law, so we'll do that. Okay, uh, do I need an approval to accept these for consideration?
I'm happy that we accept this and will under advisement till a later day.
Excuse me, say, you don't, a motion's not necessary until you actually act on it. But you're, you're making everybody aware of public input right now, unless you just wanna do it for, say, we're making.
Have a motion.
To make people aware that, that's your intention, is that what I motion would be?
Have a motion that we consider this and open for public comment and we'll act on it on July first. Okay?
Second?
Second. Any questions?
Yes, will there be an opportunity for your office to meet with the department heads and office holders and employees to discuss these policy changes, to provide our input? Man, I know we could stand here and talk about it for hours.
Great question. A lot of these things, that's where she got it from. He's already talking to the, the, exactly, that's a request from someone saying, we need to do this. That's why we're giving this window. We're also putting all the details on the, uh, website so that if somebody's got some details. But yeah, we're reaching out to everybody, it's a great question.
Is there going to be like, quote-unquote, a meeting, policy meeting, or do we just come and see one and just press up the circles?
Say just come and see me, it might be hard to get everyone here at one time, maybe.
That's why she's had to go out to all the ones, because it's tough to get everybody on the same page. But the main thing is we want open communication. She's, she's opened up, said, here's what you told me you want, here's the things that you really should've been doing to begin with, and if you've got, if you've got any changes.
We've got about, we've got about two weeks.
Two weeks.
Okay, now we have a, a table full of samples of this work, but it'll also be on the website.
That's right.
And so you can go on that and read the in-depth of what she's talking about, a little bit more than she spoke about with, with her writing. Mark, do you have something?
Uh, the public comments, not inside this meeting, should they be directed to the county clerk's office?
To our, to her, to the human resource director.
Could they email the county clerk's office?
Absolutely.
Maybe mine will.
And then the employees, the same way, if they wanna contact us by email or give us a call, we'll come to see you.
Employees and of course, uh, all.
All sorts.
Anybody else, yes?
Is there any comments right now?
Uh, well, yeah.
That, that sounds like a sweetheart deal that most people with real jobs in the, in the private sector don't get that kind of a deal. I don't know.
Which deal are you talking about, Tom?
Uh, letting you have your vacation, uh.
All day.
Without twelve month, twelve, without a year, and I don't know that.
I'd be happy to address that, that, or if you wanna address it, that's the vast majority of private.
I would say that's most everyone and we're the ones low. The place I just came from, got vacation right away, accruing it the same way, it's, I would say we're behind by not doing it this way.
And that's one of the problems our office holders have told us, if we're competing with Centene or US Tool, everybody does it that way, but if they come to work for you, they can't have a vacation for a year.
I'd, I'd like to finish the public comment before, uh, before there's a response, but, uh, it seems like that, uh, we're worried about your legacy and retirement and what so forth and, uh, a lot of people that are voters are interested in term limits and, and we're, we're not interested in thirty-year careers and all this stuff. And, uh, the people who, uh, the average pay of government workers is more than average pay of, of real workers who pay taxes. And, uh, you, you can check out Mark's Daily Journal and, uh, their, their, their real jobs pay less than the county jobs and the school teacher jobs and all that, and the state jobs. So, so taxpayers, taxpayers are not interested in building parachutes for government workers.
I don't see a golden parachute here anywhere.
You may not be done.
Okay, Tom, is that it?
I got a question.
Uh, Kristen, you have something?
Well, I, I'm trying to understand because like my anniversary day comes up the first, the fourth of September and I'm trying to keep my time burnt down to the bare minimum of what I have to. What if I had a vacation plan and you're gonna change this in July, I might get my five weeks.
Oh, no, you'll get on your, so for the first year on your anniversary day, you'll get the time that you're expecting, obviously because you had just worked to earn it. And then, starting after that, so you'll accrue it.
How we accrue, I mean, how quick we, I don't.
Yeah, it's based on, it's per paid period and then it's based on your length of service. Yeah, it's based on, it's per pay period and then it's based on your length of service and if you work a thirty-five hour week or forty week. So, I mean, I can, I have it right here, but it, it won't change.
You can address that individually. Tom, to make, make a comment, now you've done, private business does not operate that way. You made an incorrect assumption in your first part. When we're hiring people here, our pay, the state's pay compared to the federal government, federal government's way, way over the state where the county pay is. So when we're hiring people and most employees in this area and most employees in the state accumulate vacation, vacation time, that's one of the things that, that the office holders have said it's difficult, that's one of the things that puts us at a disadvantage. In the last few years, our actual wage rates, what Centene, what US Tool, what all of our employees, right, employers are compared to our starting wage rates in the county, they exceed our starting wage rate. But I'm, I'm glad you brought it up because we have been looking at salary comparisons and one of the things that makes us uncompetitive competing for employees are vacation dance.
Also, office holders do not get vacation on sick leave.
Yeah.
Whereas the employees themselves approve that, not the office.
Follow up, Lauren.
But you're a salaried employee.
Follow up, Lauren talked about the, the sick time and I would like to see any employee, government employees and private employees be compensated for their unused sick time when they leave. And I wish with your sixteen years in Jeff City that you guys would have handled that back then.
Great question, we didn't get any sick time.
No, I, I wish, I wish you would have passed a law where people, where people get that, county employees and private sector employees.
We do, we do.
When they, when they leave, unused, unused when you leave.
I can speak as a formal legislator, when you start, if, if you think the taxpayers want the, the government to get in and regulate and tell all private business what to do, I think you're in the vast majority, minority on that.
So, so corporations don't do that, but the government does?
This county does. There's some government agencies that may, may, may not. What she was referring to is someone asked a couple of months ago, when they quit, even though they could have been compensated for their sick time, they wanted to give it to the pool that we have for people that have used up all their sick time with long illnesses. And we didn't have a policy for that. And what they've asked her to do is create a policy so that if somebody quits and wants not to take their vacation, I mean, their sick time and pay, they want to give it to the pool that we've created for people with long-term illnesses, they can do that without penalties.
Well, I didn't know that. If you're getting that now, then I'm happy you get that. I wish all the other people in Missouri got that too.
Well, I don't know if it'd come up very much because very few people will be good enough to donate their sick time to that pool, but somebody just did, so we need to have a policy.
Now, on that one, we had to go a special dispensation, if you will, to allow that person to, I think it's hundreds of hours, to the, the special pool that we have. And that pool was created when we had a debt basis, very ill, there's terminal and that debt has died since then. That was about to lose benefits because they'd used up all their sick time. And so this pool was created to help alleviate that situation, so. Amber?
Right now, I think an employee has to be with the county for ten years before they're eligible to be paid out their sick time. Is that still going to be a qualification to donate your time? Because you're really not entitled to that time unless you've been here ten years, so that's the way, or if they're donating it, are they able to donate it even if they haven't been here ten years?
That's something we need to review.
That's a good consideration.
Make note on that.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a motion to accept these preliminary procedures and allow for public comment over the next two weeks, hopefully a little quicker so we'll be time to update them and then we will act on them on July first meeting. All in favor? Aye, aye. Thank you, someone?
Let me, your guess? This is just preliminary. You asked her to come up with the things that immediately need to be changed in our policy.
Yes.
She's going to take the next four months and look at the whole policy and there's some minor things that need to be looked at and we're going to have open meetings to, to address your point of when these overall policies, even though some doesn't affect that, to go over those. But these are things that needed to be addressed. You said what needs to be addressed now and so as we talked to the, the officials, these are the things that came up, so you need to have a, a set policy on, on the drug, you need to have a set policy on if somebody asks for references and you need to have a set policy on, we need to change policies on vacation because it's hurting our hiring. Those are what she's addressed right now, but that doesn't mean it's over. By the time November comes, hopefully before you finish the, the budget, she will have a chance to overview the whole policy.
And I want to express my appreciation, Lauren, too. You have jumped in and done this and I know you spent a lot of extra hours doing this and I appreciate it. I told you that fact, but I'm going to say, oh, I appreciate your work. Okay, moving along, thank you. Next regular meeting will be this time next week and same place and other business. Now, court bonds, anybody? Okay, sir, you want to make a public comment on, I mean, please, one day it was. Will you come to the microphone?
Do you have a difficult time coming or can you come?
No, I can get up. Please start out. Uh, my name's John Stagg. I have a couple of properties. My, my property on forty-three O'Toole Brook Road was assessed at ninety-nine thousand and seventy dollars. I lived there for fifteen years, the property taxes didn't change much, they did change a little bit, but not much over the years. And all of a sudden I got reassessed or appraised at hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for a mobile home with two acres on it. And whoever appraised it, he must be nuts. And then I have another property, I have a, I have a house that I built in Dover on four, four acres and, and I, I couldn't finish it because I ran out of money because the real, because the contractor cheated me using money on drugs and ended up in jail. And, and there's no plumbing, no electricity, no nothing, it's just four walls and a roof. And the place is starting falling on itself as it is. And they're, they raised, the appraisal on that was forty-five thousand eight hundred and forty dollars for, for five years and now all of a sudden they've raised it to a hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and twenty. That's triple, that's triple. And. So I don't understand why they're doing this and I want to know if there's a, is there a law or isn't there a law, there is in most states, where they can only bring up your property taxes like two percent a year? And if, if this is the case, then they can bring it up to whatever they want based on how much, what their needs are. It's, it's just out of control.
Mr. Stagg, can I, can I ask you, did you, you got assessment, did you talk to this?
I got the assessment yesterday, I've been on the phone with everybody, I can.
So the assessor's here, Dan, you want to address that?
Sure, please.
Well, I want to finish my comments. Anyway, I think you are trying to make homeowners pay for the huge increase of children entering the school district, for the many apartments being built. You are trying to make us pay your huge salary increases for the first-class counties status you forced down our throats. If, the way things are going, I might have to sell and move to these four-class counties as Johnson, Peters, Lafayette and Celine, those, those are the four-class counties left in the state and I might have to try to sell. If you think my mobile home and, and two acres is worth a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, I wish one of you people would bu, would buy the place so I could get the heck out of here. Now, you guys, I, I see a lot of apartments going up around here, all over the place. And I don't know how it works here and I know in other counties, they're, they're jacking people's property taxes up on their homes to pay for all the multitude of kids going to the school district. So if you have a, you have a twenty, twenty dwelling apartment building, there could be as many as a hundred kids in that dwelling apartment building. Now, if you're making people, the owner of that apartment building pay one small fee and then you've got a hundred kids waiting at the bus stop, and I've seen that off H Highway, when I was behind the bus, half the kids got off the bus and went into their apartments. So, so you're going to make the homeowners pay for, for the, for the kids that are, are not paying, their families that are not paying their property taxes because they live in apartments? I mean, that's not right. You're going to, you're going to tax us out of, out of the county and then our kids won't be able to go to the schools. We'll have to move and go somewhere else. Plus our land, we'll never get the amount of money out of our houses that you seem to think that, that it's worth. I mean, I had that place checked, I was going to sell it, I think the, the real estate agent told me a couple of years ago, I can only get like a hundred and ten thousand dollars out of the place. So yes, it may be worth more than ninety-nine thousand, but it's not worth more than ten hundred and ten and that's it. Anyway. And who, who, the person who drove their car up and down my, my, by my house, looking at my house for like thirty minutes, does he knew? Is he, who's, who's doing that? Is it, is it Dan Ward? Who's, who's driving around in the car, making these terrible decisions, forcing me out of my house and put me on the street? I mean, where does he get these? I've got, I've got a big, huge mansion next to me, worth about five times more than my place. My place is the cheapest place off the Hill and Brook Road. I mean, it's worth the least amount of any house on that, on that old road, all the way up to W. And, and I know that, I mean, I, the, the property cost me thirty-seven thousand dollars and I spent, that was with the mobile, that was with the mobile, and then I spent thirty thousand dollars on that addition. And, and I, I spent a little bit of money on a septic system and a well, but it sure doesn't come, come to more than a hundred thousand, definitely. It's like ninety thousand and that's it. So you're going to tell, tell me that my house, that I ended up spending no more, no more than ninety thousand if, if on, isn't worth a hundred and seventy-six thousand? Well, that's ridiculous, that's crazy. And I've been living in this house for fifteen years, but, but the same assessed value for fifteen years. How can you go from the same assessed value for fifteen years and then go up to seven hundred and seventy-six thousand? Now, I know the school, school district have that, probably has a bond or something, where they want to raise the rate from seventy-five dollars, seventy-five percent to ninety-five percent. So if, if my property, the value of my property goes up from ninety-nine thousand to a hundred and seventy-six thousand and then you tack on that, that seventy percent to not, seventy-five percent to ninety-five percent, that's going to bring up the, that's going to double my property taxes, that's going to double. And I won't build a blue building anymore. And that, there's a brick house, there's a nice bricks house on this side, nice brick house with a basement. And then there's a mansion on this side of me and I'm living in a double-wide mobile home on two acres. And then you, if you think my house is worth as much as that great brick house on this side of me or that, or that, or that mansion, it's just not. It's just not worth that kind of money. I mean, I've got crummy siding, I've got, I've got a crawl space underneath the trailer, who knows what's living under there? It's really, that house is close to being uninhabitable, but I, I've been living in there for fifteen years with my wife and kids because I have nothing else. And I, I would have moved into that other house, but I, I don't have any money. I, I ran out of money because the darn contractor ripped me off, so. So, you know, this is, this is highway robbery, this is corruption and we need to have a law saying you cannot tax anybody more than two percent a year, otherwise you're going to tax us out of existence. Anyway.
Okay, sir, on your letter, I got one too yesterday, I had a, and it had, it listed the appeal methods, there are.
I'm already, I'm already starting that.
Okay, that's good and I appreciate that. And I know they're swamped over here today with phone calls, I know that.
Well, what do you expect?
So, but, appeals please and then I'd like to be able to be in the board of equalization and then.
I, I have a question. Says on this thing, I have to get an appraisal. Well, appraisal's what, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars? I don't have a.
No, they're not that expensive, I've had to do them lately, so.
What, how, how much do they cost?
Uh, one of them's four hundred and fifty dollars.
That's still a lot of money for me.
A lot of money, yeah.
That's a lot of money.
Okay, Dan, did you want to respond? Would you please come forward?
I'm afraid, I may not want to listen to him because he may make me so mad I'll walk out of here.
Well, I hope you don't walk out though. When you're finished, I'll come up and talk.
Well, you, there's nothing you can say that's going to, going to make this right.
Okay, okay, let's, okay, let's stop at that. Dan, please come forward, make your response. Finished?
You want me to get down?
Yes, please. We had, didn't have the opportunity to visit together prior to this meeting, this has been brought to my attention already. I have this files on my desk and the gentleman that he spoke to came to me and we both agreed that the values that have been placed on his properties are incorrect, were incorrect. Those were in the process of doing that. So, John, if you'll come down to the office.
Nobody told me anything about that.
Well, would you have, I just came up to.
Oh.
Address what we're, what we're doing, so if you please come down after the meeting.
That'd be fine, thank you.
We'll, we'll go through the process and work it out.
Yeah.
Because I've seen the buildings and I agree. We are, have raised values on residential and commercial property, land values and the impact notices have been received and of course we're hearing and seeing a lot from the taxpayers on these issues. The appeal process has always been in place and we hope people will take advantage of that, is do you call, send appointment or come by the office? And I've had several this morning already that I've personally been working on, will be throughout the rest of the week, to start the informal hearings where my office will communicate with the taxpayer to try to find out if there was an error. We're dealing with mass appraisal, we're not dealing with one-on-one, we're dealing with mass appraisal.
How many units did you send out?
We sent out seven thousand impact notes due to increase, due to either increases of sales in the market on residential or to increases in commercial land value and some building values. But again, we want to deal with each one of them and try to make sure that we have our information correct and if it's not, to correct it and work with the taxpayer. I'm physically inspecting some places later today and tomorrow and we, we do this process every two years. And those that get the impact notices hopefully come to us first and if we can resolve it, we do. If not, then they go to the board of equalization, which meets here in this room, as you all know. So my duty is to try to help those folks come to a resolution. I've spoken with the school superintendent, Department of School District, as we know, seventy percent of our taxes go to the schools.
What was that number again, Dan?
Seventy percent of the taxes, roughly a little bit more in some areas, show to the school districts. And I understand that we have seniors out here that don't have children in school and.
I think it's seventy-eight percent go to schools.
Depends on the school district.
And, and where you live.
And actually, farms in school districts levy right last year was three point seven four nine seven. Now, I, as I said, I spoke with the superintendent, he's been with the board today, I've given him some, some preliminary numbers to what the increase is going to be and he did state and he texted me that it appears that the levies will be rolling back, so they will be lowering. But our, my process as the assessor is to, to determine as close as we can to market value. And we've been very, roughly in the seventy and eighty percent values in this county and by state statute, I'm supposed to be ninety above. So I'm trying to stay between ninety and ninety-five and not go any higher than that. So we are seeing a lot of increases, but we want to work with folks and see if there's some issues independently on their structures of their property, maybe we have made a mistake. If we have, we want to fix it. And that's what the appeal process is for, so we hope we can try to work with a lot of these folks and help them. Some we are able to, some we are not. I've had some people say, my house is worth that. So it's just the fact that it went up so much and we, we tried to understand that this is a two-year process, we only do it in the odd years. So it's not a four-year process or a six-year process and in order to get up where we need to be, we made the adjustment. I have some disagreements with some of the software and some of the values are coming up in smart commercial areas also, we're going to be addressing those, hopefully adjusting some of those downs, we're working on those. But in his, in John's case, yeah, we, we're already working on his process, we agree with him, it's not worth that and we want to, or we will. Okay, thank you for that. There's an inference in there about the people living in an apartment do not pay taxes, that's built into their rent structure, the owner of the apartment does pay taxes. And then that part is cost, so it goes into the rent. So actually, in that sense, the people living in the apartment do pay county taxes. And we're working with some of the issues on the apartment complexes also that were brought, was brought up this morning that I think needs to be addressed. John, do you have a question?
I would like to know the assessment of the property taxes that these apartment owners are paying, based, based on how many units they have versus a homeowner. I mean, he's, if he has twenty units and he's paying maybe three thousand a month for property taxes and then somebody else. And then somebody else is paying fifteen hundred dollars, I mean, a year, a year in property taxes. But he's got twenty people living in that, and, and, in there. Wow, that's, that's a, that's a lot, a lot of change. That's, that's, that's almost a hundred kids. Versus the other guy on his, on his house, he may not have any kids, or he may have one or two kids. And so, he's still paying for the, for the children who have twen- twenty, have, you know, twenty units and a hundred kids in, in an apartment building for the school, for the schools. He's, he's, he's a, he, he's being, overpaying, paying for people that he shouldn't have to pay for.
And those are individual appraisal questions, I don't know how to answer those. On, on the appraisal also, I'd like to address, we're not mandating appraisals. We're, we're telling that this is a, and have new, they'd like to follow, they may do so. Banks also have appraisals on their homes sometimes for recently built or, or, uh, law purchase. Uh, I had a gentleman this morning that had a two thousand and fifteen appraisal, I'm looking at it, I don't wanna just discount because it's four years old. So we're looking at everything, not just necessarily appraisal. That's why on an informal hearing, we try to set it up where we go out and look at the house to let them point out anything that we may have missed as far as deterioration or something that we call the depreciation on a home. We do a certain compensation due to any, but if you wanna work with the taxpayer, we're not just, it's not cookie cutter where we just say, hey, this is it. Uh, it's over with. We, we had the appeal process, we wanna help.
We have somebody that's your representative?
Uh, can you come forward, please? Thank you, Dan. Start with your name, please.
Sure, my name is Patsy Weddle. I own professional property management here in town and I'm actually here for the tax purpose. Um, we're not gonna throw the school district under the bus at all. Um, and I'm here because of the tax issue. And the apartments are paying their taxes because I had to call somebody yesterday and said, by the way, your taxes just went up thirty-six hundred dollars. And they have one-bedroom apartments and no children. So this is not a school district issue, the, the schools do their taxes. There do the taxes that educate the children, whether there is a child in that apartment or not, or it's a commercial building or not.
Isn't that kind of stuff that would cancel?
Um, so, you know, I understand because I live on Hildreth and I got the same, I got the same thing. But I was coming to see why the increases were so high. And actually, I talked to Dan back there and I'm gonna go down to his office. And, and they, I've made an appointment to talk because I had to talk to, because I manage property. Um, I had to talk to half a dozen commercial people yesterday and go, okay, you're probably not got it in the mail because you're in California. But I've made an appointment, we're gonna talk, go to the commission tomorrow to see why the increases all at one time. Rather than maybe spread over a couple of years. So, you know, Dan's doing his job and we're gonna find out, we're gonna go find out why. But, you know, I got the letters yesterday too, and I'm telling people that have rental houses that your taxes went up enough where now your rent cannot pay for the mortgage, the taxes and the insurance. So, you know, it, it's an issue and it affects not just the regular, you know, the resi- people in residential, affected mine. You know, it affects the people that have apartments, commercial, that also do business in the, in the county, so it's not just residential.
Can I address your, your part about why it's going up? I, I wasn't here, so I can say this, defending the, the county. I was at the state at the time. And this county and a previous assessor would have just, I don't know where, the assessment. Your taxes are supposed to be based upon the marketable value of your, now, the reason they had to come up so quick is back then, he would put it at thirty percent or forty percent or, I envy if he was a friend, it might be less or more. Everybody's supposed to be paying the same, whatever their market value is, about ninety, ninety, uh, five percent. Now, to address your point earlier, they cannot have a windfall though. They're gonna have to roll some of those tax rates. Now, the county's rate has been rolled back every year and it's less than, yeah. It's less than ten percent and probably rolled it, but your schools will have to address it.
Oh, yeah.
Or because of the Hancock Act. But that's the reason it came up quickly, because the state sued our assessor, if you remember. Over several years, cost the county thousands of dollars and lost because the state said, you are not basing it upon market value. And I think that's the fairness, if everybody thought that it was truly being, that everybody was being treated equal. But when you're setting up seven thousand different things, there's gonna be something wrong. And that's why I wanted to speak. You've got the process then, then we got the process of the appeal. That, call my office, we take the notes for that. We've already filled up July first, we've, uh, we're working on July second. We have time periods, fifteen-minute allotments. The only thing I ask people to, to, if they're gonna do it, make sure their property is actually worth less like, like, uh, Mr. Snacks said, make sure your property is actually worth less than what you, you've been assessed so that you've got, if you're just coming in because you say, I got an increase and I don't like it. I asked somebody a while ago, I said, have you had your house appraised? Well, yeah, well, was it less than that? No, it was a hundred thousand dollars more. Well, you're probably not gonna do well in the appeal. Because, because it's, you see what I'm saying? So, and this is a long period for, for going on.
Yeah, it's for, it's for everybody, but that's, you know, I wanted to, you know, say, the apartments are paying because believe me, I had to make phone calls yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is not just a straight residential, they have a large residential, so, yeah.
Well, I don't agree with you, John, I don't agree with you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. John, just second please, David.
Okay.
And I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, so, and again, I, that's why I came today, was to talk to them and, you know, do you know what the process was?
Patty, do you know how many people are protesting? Do you have any idea?
Of my people?
No. People are, are constituents. How many citizens out there are protesting? It's not just a few.
No, I, I don't know, I, I know, I-
I mean, you came up to endorse Dan and I'm just asking.
No, I'm just saying, Dan's doing his job and then I'm coming-
So Dan didn't ask you to come in?
No, Dan did not ask me to come in. I came in on the people that I represent. But I'm gonna make an appointment with Dan and, and go through the proper things. But what I'm saying is, he's saying that apartments aren't paying theirs. Well, I can tell you. I represent apartments, I represent commercial, I represent residential, I have my own. And I got lots of stuff across the board that all got increases.
To answer your question, we've had two to three times many people call us and booked, uh, Board of Equalization appointments. And we've got about twenty-five of those appointments booked. A lot of them just wanted information, how much will this be? Lady was hysterical until her, until I told her I calculated for her that it was gonna be about fifty bucks. And if the cit- if the city and the, uh, school district does not roll back their tax rate, then, then she was calm and didn't want to appeal. But the appeals, we've set up about twenty-five appeals so far, and I know you've had many more times that call asking questions and, and, uh, discussing whether their value was truthful.
We have a lot of informal hearings that we're processing now. And we will be throughout the Board of Equalization because we get the authorization to go ahead and continue that process. Law B O E is going on.
Right.
And we will continue, we've done past continuous discussions.
And I've called the assessments office yesterday and I'm gonna make an appointment to, sorry, for ours and make sure we're ours of credit.
I think the primary thing is to follow the procedure on your letter, the, the appeal procedure. And the primary thing that you can argue is the value of your property, the true value of your property. If you believe that is wrong, okay. Yes, John?
Uh. I, I had any questions for you, miss? I'm sorry, I had one more question for you. I've been swaying in my house for the last fifteen, twenty minutes. Do you have the-
Wait a minute, this, address the-
Okay, does she have the figures for that, for her, for her, uh, comments? Does she have the figures on what the, what taxes that the apartments are, are being, being charged? And, and how many units they have per apartment? She's just, she's just-
That's public record.
That's public record.
Well, I don't have that information and I never needed it till now, I guess.
Can you give a specific example of something?
Of a specific example?
Yeah, of some apartment.
I had a tw- I can tell you that I had a twelve-unit apartment and theirs are going up three thousand six hundred dollars. On top of what they were paying, so-
What, the roughly percentage?
I don't know the percentage, we just went through yesterday, looked at the tax valuation, did the, you know, multiplied everything out and it's going up thirty-six hundred dollars. So on the rent on that particular apartment building, we're having to raise the rent on every apartment about fifteen dollars a month.
Okay.
But you're raising it rent so you don't have to pay for it. And they, they have, but you know, okay, laugh at me if you want, go ahead, laugh at me.
Yeah.
I'm sure I'm a big joke to you guys.
No, no, it's-
Anyway.
You have to cover costs if you're in business, and that's what we're there for.
Well, I do this, there is a website available, and I'd be happy to put it on our website, maybe you can go check a specific and see what taxes are.
This, okay, uh, most, let, let me tell you, most apartments have kids. Me, she might not have any kids in her twelve, twelve-unit apartment, I don't know, but most apartments around here have, they have kids and they have lots of kids. And I guarantee you, they're paying, they're not paying the taxes that the home, the single homeowner's paying. I'll guarantee you. But I, also, I'm, I, I had a couple more questions. Uh, you know, the, uh, the school, how much pack taxes, does the school pay any taxes for their buildings? Schools, the schools out here, I guess they don't, right?
No.
Yeah. And, uh, their superintendent, you know how much he's making? He's making a hundred and thirty thousand a year. The principals are making a hundred thousand and the teachers are making sixty-five thousand a year. They're making pretty good money. Maybe they should take a, uh, a little bit of a cut, like we're taking a big hit. Because, because this is, a lot of this is about the schools.
Well, all of those incomes you mentioned are taxable, uh, income taxes and everything. And we're not here to discuss federal income, we're here to discuss county business.
Yeah, this, and this, see, the, uh, my property taxes are dr- dr- are, are related to their, to their wages. Because they're, the more they get, the le- the more I have to pay in my property taxes.
That's the point, and the school board, I think, eats the day, so that'd be a-
I know, five o'clock, I'll be there.
Thank you. Okay, um, any other questions, anything I think we need to draw this to a close?
Why, why does the, uh, if the assessor makes a mistake, why does the, the owner, the victim have to pay five hundred dollars for an appraisal to correct the assessor's mistake?
Well, I don't think he has to have an appraisal. If he can call the assessor back and say, this board, these boards are rotten, they're out, and this house is going downhill. They will probably make the correction. So I think if you call the assessor's office, they will be happy to work with you.
Okay, thank you.
If you can show that there's a, if the client value or not the value that you think that they think it has been, they're gonna pay for it. They'll be happy to work with you. I don't know if the appraisal is required.
This, this could have been better or smoother, maybe if they had been some advance notice and maybe like if Louis on K R E I had had some public announcements, say, hey, hey, folks, in four to six months, be ready for your tax to be, be surprised by the tax.
We can know the topic now that in two years this will happen again.
This is kind of, this was, this was kind of blindsided, you know, and it could be a little-
It happens every two years?
It's happened for seven months, so how much time would it need?
It has, this, you say they appraise every two years, right?
Well, no, that's, okay, Dan, you wanna talk about that? Every two years, according to state statute, all assessors across the state are required to review property in their jurisdiction to see if there are any changes. So if there's an existing home, we're required to go, we're required to look at each one. We go to a home and see that they built a room onto it or added a patio or a deck, then that's new construction. Then we add on to that, so in the following year, it on January first, it will be attached to their next year's taxes. Under new homes, if they're built, those are picked up as they are being built and we put them on to, uh, the tax rolls. And once those people occupy those homes thirty days after they occupy them. So it's, it's a, it's a law that says we have to physically look at them, see if there are changes. We don't necessarily raise values every two years. It depends on the market value and where we're at. And in this case, the market remained below market. And Mr. Engler says for many years, and especially in a situation back in the nineties, where we were required to raise them and it weren't, they weren't raised, so, uh, but they were thirty percent over a two-year period, it's quite an increase at that time. A lot of the older homes are below market, the newer homes were keeping up with the situation. But the buy-in, every two years we have to review, not, we did not have to raise values every two years. And you did it this time on your level? Seven thousand people, now how many, how many files do you have, that's- Well, we got forty thousand parcels in the county and-
Small percentage, just a little bit.
And, okay.
I have a question for the assessor. I received one of these as well. So if I can look at the new assessment rate and I feel like I can sell my home and my property at least five percent above that, then it's not too high, is that correct?
Okay, let's be careful about our words. You're saying assessment, it's appraisal.
Appraisal, I'm sorry, appraisal.
Be careful about your words.
Appraisal, okay. The appraisal rate, if it is well below what I think I can sell that, the home and that property for, then there's no problem, correct?
Well, there's always a problem because when there's an increase and inevitably, there's, that's probably gonna be reflected down the road on your taxes if the levies remain, remain the same. In this case, we're hoping for lower, but yes, and we've had situations in the past where I've been, had received calls, said, your site says my home is worth X amount of dollars and it's worth more than that, I'm trying to sell it, I'm trying, I'm trying to refinance it. You've got it way below what they say it's worth, and we need to talk about that. So we review that and we try to correct that for them. They're asking for a tax increase, basically because they, their values are too low and they want them brought up because they're getting a loan from the bank.
But for the lighting out there, the security.
But for the average person, but they look at that and it can be confusing because they see these numbers and they reflect it to tax numbers. And really are they are, what they are is the value, the market value. That assessed value, you divide that by a hundred and multiply times a levy, that gives you your tax rate.
Right.
When people call us or they call the collector, they ask, what's it gonna cost? We only refer to last year's levy. We don't know what the levy's gonna be this fall because the numbers haven't been turned in and the rollbacks haven't occurred yet. So it can be kind of shocking when you use last year's levy to see what your taxes are gonna be, see how much they go up.
And we're almost certainly looking at a rollback with, we're showing four percent plus increase year-to-date on our sales tax increase. Which means that we will be rolling back again, almost certainly, our, our tax levy base.
And there are several people in my office that are employed by my office that using last year's levy are gonna see quite a huge rate, uh, rate tax increase rather. One of them around five hundred dollars, but there was not an argument on the value, it's below market for so long. We wouldn't sell it for that, we'd sell it for more than that. That's just the fact that there is gonna be, and unless it's, hopefully it won't be rolled back.
Well, I'm hoping it's rolled back because I, I calculated it's about between a two and a half, three and a half, half million dollar increase. School, local school, one school, without their additional building, this is just an existing building, so I would assume that they would do the right thing and roll the tax rates back.
But how much does that really translate to savings for the average homeowner?
Mine went up, I think, ten, fifteen percent. If they roll it back five percent, then I'll only have a five percent increase in my actual taxes. So that's gonna have to do, they're gonna have to look at the overall, but that's substantial.
People are reporting fifty to a hundred percent increase in their assessment though, that's, that's pretty hard to understand.
That, I, I, when we talk to people in there, I get it. When I ask them, is the market value correct? Could you sell it for that or above? And they say, yes, then, then-
Yeah, but that's not what we're getting, but that's okay.
We can't, we can't go back two years and get more money from you because you've been under assessed for long.
Right.
Mr. Engler?
Was, was the software that you talked about earlier, is that where the valuations came from?
No, we've used that, we've used that process. The values have come through sales. Most, we are the process, come through sales, land sales, residential sales, some comps on apartments. I'm still having some issue with apartments, we wanna address, we'll probably change that. Those are through the market, market value, through the sales.
So not through the software?
Not, the software, the software gives us the opportunity to give, put in correct measurements, correct information to come up with the value. And that is adjusted down to depreciation and through other, other things are implemented in to bring it down to a realistic value. But those values are created through sales in the market. There was a comparable, uh, say, piece of software in that too, so that does agree. Okay, uh, are we, have finished this topic? Okay, let's move right along. But departmental reports, uh, I'd like to comment on the, my response to the Missouri auditor's, uh, state auditor's report. And they told me specifically there was no fraud. They, the, the state auditor said that, not the auditor herself, but her employees here, said there was no fraud. And the findings were bookkeeping procedures and methods and errors in that. And, and since nineteen, I'm sorry, twenty fifteen, this group of commissioners, plus the auditor's office, have worked hard to bring our twenty-year out-of-date, uh, policy manual and our software, which is probably that old too, up to date. And we've got that now and we have new tools in place and since, I think since twenty seventeen, when we adopted the new policies, pretty much all of this has been found and solved. I think there's one, two instances after that that happened. But the auditor's office is working hard, they, they have the software and now they say, woo, this will take it, there's no receipt for this much. Or there's this one exceeded our daily allowance for meals when traveling, that kind of stuff. So basically, it's been corrected, it will be corrected more and more so, because we have people like Lauren working on our policies and updating that on a regular basis. So- So, basically, what had they found, had been found and corrected for the most part. And since then.
That's not really true, Harry.
Okay.
I mean, they didn't get any input, um, back from Jared. So, they can't prove or disprove certain things because they simply didn't have a broad range.
Jared did.
But what the public wants to know is why that you, as the final person, signed off on a lot of things that they did that was not appropriate.
That hasn't been done since we got our policies done, as far as I know. I just want, that hasn't.
But how do you respond to what transpired beforehand? I mean, the law is the law. Doesn't matter what's in your policy book. It's law.
Because of misunderstandings on everyone's part, as Jared did commented in the news paper article. He was using the procedures followed by his predecessor in office. Because the, the rules just weren't explained and clear in the software.
He's an attorney. He should know the law, as you should.
I'm not an attorney, but still. And we work on that and we're on a daily approval improvement process. We're doing the best.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, but I think that's really, really a false statement that you're putting out there. And the people, the public are gonna see that and breathe a sigh of relief, but we're not out of the woods by any stretch of the imagination.
What, what part's false? I'm sorry.
In this very thorough report, the state auditors found no intentional wrongdoing. There was no fraud. That's simply not true.
He told me that again.
But Hillary didn't intend to do anything wrong either, did she?
There we go.
Okay, all right, that's, all right, okay. That's, that's my comment. Okay, Amber?
Um, one thing I did want to talk about was the, what they call bonuses.
Yes.
And I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't that the money paid to the employees was illegal. It was the method. So, statute says that prosecutor can pay supplemental salaries to his employees. And there was a misunderstanding as the timing. Jared paid it in one-month sum. State auditor said they could do that, but it had to be spread across all twenty-six pay areas, not in one-month sum.
Was that done under Wendy's? Wendy as well?
I was not here during this one. I'm not a hundred percent, but according to the prior prosecutor, yes.
Okay. Any other?
Okay, question, man. Yeah, I, I'd like to have a policy in place for you guys next week to vote on, on our position on indigent burial policy. There is a organization that reimburses for that. There has to be proof. There has to be the test to be get. You've had some, we shouldn't have to make the call every time. We just, I wanna put this so that we will attempt to get the money for that. Not that we're gonna guarantee that we're gonna get it, but if they follow these certain criteria, then we will send in the form for the funeral.
Cape, your auto, Cape County, they also have, and they're getting their policy.
Could you give me a copy of that so I can write?
The auditor copied that, but, uh, be glad to, sorry.
Okay, uh, um, I think we talked about it last week, but I just want to highlight what was in the letter for certificate completion of making through property. It read, "This site is safer all reasonably except in land, in this state of land." And it read, yeah, acceptable for unrestricted use of the property. So, kudos to the Roombridge guys that got in there and cleaned that up and had huge cost savings. And we appreciate you very much. Thank you for your hard work on that. Uh, auditor's report, this may have been reported last week, but again, I wanted to highlight it. Uh, at roughly forty-two percent through the year, there's only one item that's above budget. That's coroner's office and we really can't control how many people are uncalled to coroner's office. So, that's going well. Uh, are there any other department reports, by the way? Okay, German, it was with Jared.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Uh, hey.